Call this meeting in order. Dr. Easton, would you give an implication?
Yes. May everybody head please. Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and your support as we begin this meeting. Bless each member of Trinity Valley Board of Trustees with the insight, the discernment, and compassion as they carry out their duties. May their actions be guided by justice, fairness, and a deep commitment for the well-being of our students, faculty, and staff. May their effort be fruitful, and their leadership be a source for inspiration to all. We offer this prayer in your name, trusting for your grace and your guidance in all the people. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Easton. Do we have any public comments tonight? Seeing none, Dr. Morrison.
All right, since last board meeting, we've had a lot of successes to recognize among our students, and that's kind of why I'm going to focus tonight on my board update presentation. Of course, you all know that when we have at home victory, we light the tower in red. It's been extremely positive in the community. We hear a lot of comments about it. And so it's kind of a new tradition, and it's pretty exciting. It's a lot of work for Eddie because we don't have LED lights that change colors naturally right now, so he has to go out there and manually do it. He's doing a great job. We had convocation since we last met. Here is the thanks to my wife Stephanie and little Brennan. Here was the shirt design that was given out to all the faculty members as a gift from the Morrison family. Just kind of highlights all the hashtags that were known for at Trinity Valley. I think it was pretty well received among the faculty and staff. I think they're already wondering what's coming next year shirt's going to be. We had a huge event called All-Star Showcase on campus where we introduced all of our teams. And first years, this was the first year that we incorporated introduction of the Beef Kettle Judging Team, our show team, the rodeo team. They were all recognized at this All-Star Showcase because those departments all now report in athletics. We had a pretty good turnout, and students were pretty well excited, pretty excited about being recognized. Homecoming is coming up. Be sure to put on your calendar. We have events from the 24th through the 27th. With that game going to be on that Saturday, where we'll crown the king and queen. So please get that on your calendar. And of course, our cardettes and band were just last week in Dallas marching in the State Fair Parade. And I was told that they were recognized on a number of news outlets.
Dallas Morning News.
So the HR cardettes and our band. The Jimmy Elder era of soccer has started. He started the season 5-0. We did drop last week. We had what was called the murderous row week. We had two row games against number four Tyler and then number one Navarro. We lost the game to Tyler 4-2. Had a couple missed opportunities. But you got to consider in the first three seasons, any game against Tyler and Navarro was at least 15-0. Navarro, we lost 2-0. Navarro scored their second goal with 40 seconds to go because we kind of pulled our players pressing to score because, as Jimmy said, doesn't matter if you lose 2-0 or 1-0, you lost. So we were really wishing to score. And we had two missed opportunities at the last five minutes to score. Ball just went about three inches left and did not make it into goal. And another one, the goalie came out. Ava got it over her head, and it just kind of grasped too long, kind of killed the roll. And the goalie grabbed it, did you not? Probably less than three inches from the line for scoring. But I'm really proud of what Jimmy's doing for the program. It's really done remarkable job considering where they're standing. And the 29 young ladies that play on the team are doing an outstanding job representing the college. We've had a lot of player of the week recognition. This is at the national level. Jomani Davis had a big game with six receptions, one TD, and 144 yards. Emma Beckner, she was recognized as player of the week for volleyball, defensive player of the week. We had our first ever soccer young lady recognized as a national player of the week, Ellie Pace from England. And Jeremy Davis was also recognized as player of the week with eight receptions, 244 yards, and three TDs. There's going to be some, he's already had quite a few D1 offers coming through. I think I missed one. Trevion, our defensive lineman, was recognized as player of the week. And he's also picked up an offer from University of Georgia. So he's a beast. Little update on ranch management. As Stowe and I were talking earlier, yearly, we have our ranch management sale where we sell some cattle. And this year, we sold over 100, we made over $106,000 in the sale of what we raised, the cattle we raised. So kudos to what Mark Robinson and his group's doing out there. This is a picture of the Beef Judging Show Team. We now have 11 members on that team. They've had two successful weekends, especially this last weekend. We'll be sending out next week something. We just got all the results in today. But we won several division champions, and we also won the Junior Bowl champion recognition, along with first hurting championships. And I mean, it was just an extremely successful weekend in Tulsa with this group. But we'll be sending those results out. Like I said, we just got them today. The Cardinal Sports Network, we always want to give a shout out to them. Last year, we covered 77 events with 65,000 views. It is this, and for our opening football game, we had over 5,500 views for that opening football game. They do a remarkable job, high level as far as camera angles, production. I mean, it's a first rate effort done by our team. Dave, would you like to make a comment about the Cardinal Sports Network?
Comment is this gentleman back here.
Miles?
Really is kind of providing that leadership for that team. He just goes.
Miles, would you like to share anything about your team?
Well, this year, right now, I just checked before I came over here. We're at over 15,000 views for the season. And Susan started August 24th, just a month ago, basically.
And that's two home football games, two home volleyball games.
Three volleyball games, and then I think three soccer games, and then the All-Star Showcase. That by itself got over 700 views. I mean, that's outstanding. I want to give the credit to the team. Those guys worked tirelessly. There is no easy button, and we spend hours and hours and hours setting up for those ballgames, especially the football games. And you know, this guy right here is a big part of our setup. I just have to give credit to the team. I really appreciate all the effort and the passion that they put into it. And that's it. We're looking forward to getting our media trailer that's on order right now. And that's going to help a lot with that whole setup.
It's a huge part of sharing our brand across the country and even reach international. We had an event where we recognized a lot of our international students, give a chance for them kind of meet one another. We have over 31 countries represented here at Trinity Valley. And here's kind of a small group of those students that attended that event. We did help out the First Methodist Church in Athens with their food packing. I think we packed over 70, or 63,000 meals. We had from softball to football to basketball to volleyball to cheer who takes up the whole room when they show up. All came out in two different shifts. I want to give a shout out to Richard Hawkins and his family. Richard takes a lot of pictures for us. He showed up and volunteered along with his family. Matter of fact, the second shift, we brought so many people that some people got to go home because we really packed the whole church, and we got all those meals packed up real quick. And I think they finished, I think Chris told me 45 minutes ahead of schedule. So. Ivan Smith donated some furniture and some rugs and stuff for our lactation room that we have on campus. So any of our students that may be nursing have a place to go and to take care of business. Oh, here is my slide that I lost earlier for Trevion Atkins. And the first game of the season, he had tackle for loss, one, 12 tackles, four sacks in one game. I think he, right now, if I have studied him right, he's probably at 15, close to 12 to 15 sacks. That's, that's a beast. He's going to have a lot of offers outside of the Georgia offer. Couple weeks ago, Spencer, Jason Smith, and I, we had a chance to go to UT Tyler, sign an MOU for the pharmacy program that guarantees our pharmacy tech students five spots into their pharmacy program. Spencer, would you like to add anything about the pharmacy pathway?
So there's, in the MOU, it's both out some specific classes that they will take here at TBCC in order to get them ready to go through the admissions process at UT Tyler. And they can enter directly into that program with that combination of classes that we all.
Thank you, sir. Couple weeks ago, we had a great opportunity to go down to Palestine at the Rotary where Dr. Kristen Huggins in Indiana Friday talked about their programs. Kristen Huggins wowed the crowd with a couple songs. So it was a great event to talk about Trinity Valley, and it was a huge turnout. Probably 50 plus people there at that Rotary event. And Karen Shipman does a wonderful job as the campus director in Palestine in representing Palestinian community and helping build relations along with rich and workforce relations that he's building down there in partnership with the new grant that we received with those industries like Walmart and Centerston Farms. Last Friday, I got the opportunity to speak to the leaders of tomorrow. It's the, some of the top high school students among our high schools in our service areas. They come, this is part of Bathed Akapa and what Nancy Vong does for the campus. I got a chance to speak to him about leadership and leadership skills. And really what I did was have the students define what leadership means to them at their age and at the point where they are in their life. And it was a great, great event on the campus of Trinity Valley. And that's all I have of the, as far as highlights that have been happening since the last board meeting. Any questions? No questions. Now I'm going to turn it over to Tammy, who's going to give us an enrollment update. You might need to do a drum roll.
So sir, currently for the fall '24 semester, we are sitting at 4,641 is our full time equivalent enrollment number. That is an 11.29% increase over the fall of '23 official numbers. We have about two to two and a half weeks left of registration for our A B two classes that will start mid to late October. So in about three and a half to four weeks, we'll have those official numbers to see exactly where we end up for the fall semester. But so far, looking really good compared to fall of '23. We have, right after fall A B two starts, we will turn around and start registration for the spring semester on October the 28th. So we are excited to see whether we can keep things up and see the same type of trends into the spring semester.
Tammy, do you have the head count number as well?
Yes, it is. Head count is at 6,261. Compared to a head count from fall of '23, 5,763.
And when you look at the FTE being up as much as 11%, that really calculates into our credit production, tuition, and the number of hours and number of classes students are taking. Any questions about the enrollment update?
I have a question. I'm just curious about how the enrollment compares to like when we peaked in 2011. Maybe, you know, we had a COVID year there. Things were pretty rough for us. How does that compare to enrollment or nation?
So 2011, I have going back just right in front of me. Let's see, 2014 is the earliest year where we were at 5,025 FTE. So we still have a little bit of FTE, semester credit hour, head count progress if we can get back up to that point. That's one of our highest years. After that, we're. Yeah, I mean, fall of '19, obviously, after that, sort of going down with COVID and everything. We took a pretty hard hit there. Fall of '19, we were at 4,821 FTE. So getting back up close to those numbers compared to, we had gotten down to a little over 4,100 FTE after COVID kind of trended right along that number.
What was 21, 27?
I'd have to go back and look. I don't have that right. Okay.
So I think that was a big difference, the highs. I'd be curious. Thank you.
Just a question. Are other schools that are in our area experiencing this type of increase or already?
I think it's been a combination. I think overall, yes. Speaking, I guess it's been probably a month or so since I've been in any email communication with a lot of the schools. But there were some that were kind of trending right at normal, some that had seen increases and some that hadn't. We will get official numbers for fall. Those state reports, final numbers will be, and we'll certify them in not November. So we'll be able to really tell at that point.
I think one thing to highlight when we look at this enrollment, the number of traditional freshmen, sophomore, new students outpace the growth in dual credit. And that hasn't happened in some time. It's been dual credit that's been, we've been, you go back, we've been dropping in the traditional freshman sophomore enrollment. It's been declining, and dual credit's been increasing. This year, we saw an actual greater, larger increase in the freshman sophomore class than the growth in dual credit. So that's a testament to the hard work that Dr. Scowes and Tammy and all that group and on the student service side is doing and going out and getting those students. And I think a lot of our colleagues and colleges that are talking to my colleagues, they've seen some of the lower growth has mainly been in the dual credit. They've been flatter on the traditional side with growth in dual credit. But we'll, like I said, once that report comes out, mid-November, we'll be able to sit down and look at everybody across the state.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. This time, we'll take a minute to look at, consider the minutes of the August 26th meeting. You have it on here? This was also in your board packet that was sent to you earlier. Do I hear a motion to, any discussion on this, or do I hear a motion to approve? Was it made and seconded? All in favor? All opposed? Like sign, motion carried. Mr. Hopkins, considering discussed July financial statements.
Yes, sir. Y'all have been using the menu. I will say that we've updated some of the numbers. And Morton, Morton, which you emailed, the mainly revenue update, I'll tell you. I just wanted to point out a few things on the, go back up to the. One of the main things I want to point out was you see that in tuition fees and bookstore, we're down 726,000 and 101,000 expected revenue. We received $48,000 in fast revenue. We didn't get fall A B two revenue until July. So we haven't seen spring of A B two or summer. It's going to be a race as to whether we receive those in times of, before we have to close books. But I want to point that out to say that you've got revenue that made up some of that because, you know, that revenue that we've gotten is more than the deficit that you see here. So that's been met up for sales and increased tuition. You see that your housing, your food service, those things have exceeded. It's possible, and these office numbers that you see are preliminary, we're still closing books. We may exceed our overall revenue budget. You see that $60 million. Part of that is because we only budgeted 100 or so amount of value for investment income. You see, as of August, we got 1.7. Now, the Federal Reserve has already reined on that paray half a point. And that's not my budget for next year, but we made some allowances for that when we budgeted. So anybody have any questions about that?
How long do you have to receive the FAST funds so you can account it in fiscal year 2023?
Well, Stephanie, I talked about that today. If it's late enough, you know, the auditors will be here in November. We've got to turn in the audit in January. And so the best case scenario at this point, we might have to have an audit adjustment as they're doing the audit to book it. But you know, if they're beyond January before they get it to us, we've got, we've got closed books. We may try to make an estimate, but it has to be known and measurable. But we'll probably wind up having to make a estimate based on their final terms that they've got to use.
Mr. What is the problem? Are they just behind or is it normal?
Well, yes, yes, both questions. You got to remember that when they passed this law last July, August, August, you know, it was like weeks before schools. So they passed this law, and then they said, oh, now we've got to figure out how do we, how do we know who a FAST student is, who's going to do it? It was just, the law was passed and then implementation just wasn't kind.
Rules were not written until first part of September.
Yes, so everybody was scrambling, who's going to do this? And you know, we're taking our information from the coordinating board, who's getting it from TBA, who's getting it from the ISB about who's a FAST student. So we're at the mercy of these other entities to get that information. And so that's the crux of it. They're just, they're just behind, and the rules relate, that kind of thing.
Very complex.
Well, it is. You get these arguments about, well, the school thinks they're a FAST student. Or anyone says they're not. Well, you got to go work that out because we don't, we don't report that. And so my staff spends a lot of time, Tammy's folks, and we're back and forth about who's a FAST student, who's not, and getting the list right so that they can even pay.
Right, diverse.
Pretty much. I do want to mention going down to payroll. You know, this, this year that we're floating out, we budgeted 5.5% for raises. On salaries, we're at 4.78, overall personnel, 3.82. So that's, those are very good numbers considering that we budgeted a higher number, but we didn't stay below that. And the bottom, or as far as M and O, we're at 3.91% total expenses overall, 3.85 as of July. And again, I think the indexes that you've seen as far as cost of living, that kind of thing, especially this last year exceeded that. So I'm pretty impressed with where we landed there. And if we actually do exceed our revenue budget, I'm very happy about that. If we can skip to the investment report, just to mention this briefly. We got a couple other pages. We're still at 34.8 billion in cap reserve. We're earning pretty good interest, but we've already heard from the banks. As soon as the Federal Reserve made their move, I started getting phone calls. So the CD rates, as these things maneuver, are probably going to drop, obviously, since they dropped. The next page, your cap reserve, this is some of the detail. And you'll see all these same things on the over 25,000. A lot of it has to do with the Palestinian multipurpose. And I will tell you, in August, we're going to see a lot of the storm damage invoices. And we get all those, all the portfolios added in August. And last page was over the over 25,000. See if anybody have any questions. Last thing I want to mention is the auditors have been here to prove their interim work. They'll be back in November for their regular field work. Setting our budget or trying to get books closed, get all the adjusting includes. And then the presentation, the audit will be in January as you. That's all I got.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Hopkins?
A few questions on the storm. You're talking about it. Does the insurance come through with that review? Have we done the, about a headcount?
Well, what they've said so far, I think in August, we got a half million dollars, and then we got another half million in September. All of that goes by billing and deductibles and that sort of thing. I think the, what they've done right now, they haven't really been very specific about what that applies to. Of course, we've got that much loss just to HSC. But we're going to receive much more money than that. But I think they were concerned about getting some money in our hands. So so far, when you perceive them, I'm not too concerned about it. Then after, as we settle all that, then one of my folks is going to be working with female to get a part of the deductibles back from female. But that'll probably be a year before that.
A couple other questions, since I'm so new on my board that I just like to ask, and maybe you can help them out. Could you share with me, you know, I see the female or whatever budget, whatever, whatever you want to say, you know, up to July. Is there, is there a reason for it being too much behind, not like us currently now receiving the August?
Well, because we don't have all the August invoices. These, these financials were put together and turned in on September 23rd. And I can tell you, as late as last week, we still aren't getting August invoices. And so there, this is pretty standard practice. You can't, I can't close August until I have August invoices.
All of them? They can't follow up for the next month?
Well, you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, and I don't want to present financials that are that incomplete. Because there's just no way to have bank statements done, the invoices in is just not correct. For, for an organization with over 100 departments and $60 million.
I'll talk to you about that later. Just, you know, talk, answer some questions. I understand what you're saying.
If I may, from an educational perspective, there's no set timetable on certain entities that he works with submitting payment. They may set on a desk two weeks, week whatever before they send it in. So you have those levels of inconsistency throughout. So what he's saying, I would rather wait and get all those invoices in and then compile my data to present to the board. It'd be more accurate in doing it. Does that make sense?
That's so.
Yeah, so.
You know, I'm just curious why we're two months behind instead of, you know, we ought to be having all those financials in my eyes. That's how I'm used to in the world, but you know, I'm not familiar with.
Yes, from, from my lens, I've experienced having my bookkeeper to submit. But when you're dealing with others, they may have a totally different system, total list of expectation. And it's just a level of competency that may be working in those capacities. I level expectations, we want this, but trying to rush out there and make someone work with you is just. work with you is just, you just kind of have to wait.
Welcome to the world of accrual accounting.
Yeah.
Well, you understand, if you, if you buy a, a lot of stuff, it's virgin, they don't go to the construction. If you buy something at the end of August, you're not going to have that invoice in paid and financial statements done, but it's a different thing.
Right.
It's not going to happen ever.
I understand. I'm just thinking about all the technology that we can use to get, you know, the bank statements and all that kind of stuff. I understand. I guess in my business, what we do is we just pay it the next month, you know, or that's cash town.
Yeah.
Which is where my wife do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And if, and if you don't do that, the auditors will move.
Yeah. Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? I think you're doing here a motion to approve the financial report.
I'll make that motion.
Second, but all right, trustee Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Uh Dr. Morrison discussed the title nine report required by Texas Education Code fifty one dot two five three.
Uh require about coordinating board state law, we have to buy a report approved by the board, have Dr. Doss to give us a summary of the report.
Um so basically, this is just a requirement from the uh higher, higher paid coordinating board that uh Dr. Morrison has to submit this report um to you guys, but if no, um that don't have to vote on anything. It's really just informational. This report will also get posted on our website as required. Um and then we will send a certification on letter two, the higher paid coordinating board letting them know that we did submit this to you guys and we did review it.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Next, uh order of business to discuss Kaufman Central Appraisal District Board of Directors vote. You have a for you in, in your packet or on the screen. Uh this is done annually. Uh this is on Kaufman County Appraisal District. Uh as you see, we're given an opportunity here to make, to present a nominee from this entity to be considered to be on the Kaufman County Appraisal District Board. As I understand it, Dr. Morrison, correct me, if we, in the past, we, unless we've had a specific candidate, we, we just take action. But if there are other candidates presented, they'll have, we'll have an opportunity after the October fifteenth to vote on it. Is that correct?
On this one, on the Kaufman, because we have two before you. You have the Kaufman and then you have the Henderson County. On the Kaufman, we may cast votes for a listed, for a listed candidate. And there is a, a very back, once again, we typically, unless we, we take no action. That's how the last few have done.
And Steve, we get uh one hundred fifty seven votes. And so, you know, it's based on, you know, you can look at Kaufman County or point your ISD, we're going to carry the day.
Yeah, sure.
Uh but the vote, it would be, that's how many votes don't get.
So do we have a um recommendation of not, of not taking the action at this point or what's your pleasure?
I think we can just take.
Okay, the next uh is to um consider and discuss policy updates.
Uh before you have some policy updates, uh Dr. Doss is here to kind of give you a summary or answer any questions over CDV local, CR local, VIAB local and FLP local. And you have all the information in your packet.
Yeah, so a lot of these updates actually came from uh various vice presidents who were just making updates to their policies in their areas. Um and so I obviously, if you have any questions, um I can help with that or you can ask, you can ask my presence to elaborate.
I have, I have a question. Would you explain, um, just to make it, um, just to know, what, can you tell me the acronyms for CDV? What do you mean by local? I don't understand, but.
Yeah.
I want to be clear.
Um so when we get our policies from TASB, we have uh legal and we have local. So our legal is basically what state law is. We can't change those, can't modify those.
Okay.
Local is your policy or our policy. So we can create a local policy that's within the confines of the legal. But we can make it very defined to us. And then we can, you guys can modify those, we can change those and request for changes and ultimately.
Okay, so our legal department is a group, is that right?
So we go through TASB, which is a Texas association of school boards.
Okay.
Um they handle all of our policies. And so all that legal on comes from them, which is, which also comes from the state.
Thank you.
And just also, just so you know too, they do have an attorney that um is on staff there. So any of our policies, whenever we get them, I always send it to them for first for vetting. They make sure that we're on coloring outside the box. Um and that the changes we're making are, are aligned.
Okay, thank you.
Uh one question, I know we've talked about this before, but the capitalization threshold, we're raising it from five to ten thousand, is that right or what is?
Yes, sir. The, the feds changed the level and so we typically follow the feds through. This is not the policy. I don't think you're thinking up, Steve, that we're going to have that during October first thing.
Yeah.
This is strictly following, you know, this is what feds change. Little follow grants and that sort of thing about what assets get capitalized and appreciated.
Any other um questions regarding the revisions? Do we hear a motion to approve? Dr. Easton made a motion, uh trustee Aday seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Uh before you, you have um for public information notice, non-business days, which when our, when we get a public information request, our clocks are, and we have to reply in certain amount of time. We're allowed to select ten days that kind of give us the, not extra time, but mainly because in the summer, we have four day work weeks, you know, butted up against next holidays. Our public information officer Joanna, who handles our uh information requests, she designated these ten days to be approved by the board. Uh that'll keep us in compliance if we get a request around those times.
Do we hear any questions regarding this item? And no discussions, I hear a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, trustee Field seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Okay, consider and discuss contingency budget item, Mr. Hopkins.
You know, we got everything going.
Uh okay. Did y'all recall, we all approved of the transcript scanning project last year. The logistics just simply didn't work out to get that done by the end of the fiscal year. So we rolled it through this year. That money that was set aside is going to roll into cap reserves. So what we're doing here is just taking money out of contingency to set that project up until the fiscal year.
And that's important so our records will be up to date and we can have access readily to it when somebody.
Yeah, and, and to hopefully keep them from deteriorate, deteriorating anymore.
Well, thank you. Do I hear any discussion on this? Do I hear a motion to approve this? Motion made, seconded by trustee Norton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Review and discuss the annual TBCC board staff evaluations. You have before you the uh self-valuation report that we filled out a few weeks ago. One thing that I think, uh not only here, that I think is a positive thing towards some of these topic, topic is that we did have a board workshop earlier, well, last month now. And uh which we met with all the vice presidents to discuss their various endeavors and their, their part of the college. Uh does anybody have any comment of, of any of the performance areas here as it are?
You know, my concern is uh how do we plan to address some of the comments uh that are back to survey? That seems, you know, it seems a little concerning to me. Of course, I didn't, I wasn't able to participate in it because I was fairly new, but uh I just wonder um how would we communicate, how, how would you move that to us about this? That we have made some progress with it or made some changes or have you?
Sounds really good.
I think we're called under the.
Yes, right now. I would be very angry at me.
Bylaws to take a look at this and to study it and try to make improvements in each area. Uh I feel like um we might in, in a workshop or something, discuss some of these items and very get specifics. I don't think right now is probably the time to go through all of them, but I think that's what the purpose of doing this is to see where your strengths and weaknesses are. We examine those and move forward. We can judge ourselves each year on an annual basis on how we, how we proceed, how we improve or, or didn't. It's a good barometer of where we are. Kind of makes us aware of the things that you might need to improve on.
Unspeakable human tragedy. I just saw today actually a photograph of two grand.
It looks hard for you.
See us make some improvements and a lot of these segments are so, you know, like.
Governor Walz joins me and saying, those innocent people, our prayers go out.
Anybody else have any comments on this?
Us and aggressive as a.
Done, we're moving on.
To save us.
Uh discuss Henderson County Central Appraisal District Board of Directors vote. Same, same as the other, the.
Across the southeast.
Well, it's okay. Um take it as it comes.
And again.
Uh so without any, if the board has no preference, we will just take no action on this item like we did to Kaufman County.
A lot of people are justifiably worried about this crazy weather pattern. It's important for us, first of all, to say.
Executive session meeting, uh we will now convene, convene to an executive session for Texas government code five five one day. Uh over seven for the Texas Open Means Act for the fall in purpose. Deliver the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, dissonance or dismissal of a public officer or employee or adhering to a complaint or a charge against a public officer or employee.
That, what would you, what would you want to do?
We will now um go into the executive session and we'll, we'll hear a motion to do that. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Versus policies.
Thank you all.
Production in China, more manufacturing.
We have before us the uh considering this, oh, we got, need a motion to come out of this executive session. Dr. Charlie, seconded by Dr. Trustee Stone. All right, now the last item, number fourteen, consider and discuss personnel matters. Before you, you have personnel matters that were in the pocket, pocket book and also again, it's on the screen.
I just have support group for all resignation, termination, renewal, retirements, new powers and reclassification.
Hear a motion for this? Dr. Dr. Charlie, my, begging of my trustee Day. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dr. Charlie? Seconded by trustee Moore. Thank you all.
Aye.
Thank you.